Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Seconds here. Well, let's -- good morning, and we'll call the meeting to order. The time is now 9:40, and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of April 14th, 2015 is called to order. And the first item is the approval of agenda, and I understand we might want to amend that a bit. This is approval of agenda or an order of priority?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment. We have some folks who are from the Detroit Coalition that just reported out who we want to allow them to share for 15 minutes. And I think we'll put that after we get back from lunch at approximately whatever time it is, 1:30, to allow them to do that or around their participation if that's all right.
So the motion is that with an amendment at 1:30 for 15 minutes or so?
Second.
Supported by Cassandra. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. You know, before Mertz does her typically great job at introducing all of us, I wanted to just take an opportunity kind of as the predecessor of Brian. I want to notice and recognize Brian in our audience, Brian Winston, who will be the state superintendent very soon. Brian, welcome. And let's --
Probably the only time I'll get an applause.
Well, they get fewer as you're here longer. Let's put it that way.
When you retire.
When you retire, then they pretend again. They'll pretend then. You know, what I wanted to say, I said this to our leadership team yesterday, I said it at Alliance yesterday afternoon, I think the board really did a great job in selection of Brian, and I think one of the things, he's just a good person, personable but very knowledgeable. I think the other, the main thing I would focus on is it's very timely to have someone with this fresh view of a local district's perspective. I would say this, we have really, we just do have great people here, and we've worked at getting folks with varied backgrounds in the department. Many of them have been teachers, many of them have been in local districts. But there's nothing better, really, than having a new leader that's had this fresh experience. And, you know, particularly the last 10 years, let's face it, between federal and state laws and, you know, so-called reforms, we need a fresh perspective on what this feels like in a local district, and Brian's got the smarts and the heart to bring that to the table. I also think it's great, you know, it's interesting to have someone with such a varied background in one sense, to have been president of the state PTA, to have been on a local board for a number of years. I mean, this is really, I think, going to really help the person in this spot, and I'm just delighted to welcome Brian, not only to this meeting, we've got a series of things worked out where we're going to do some kind of transition issues. And one of them, it sounds like he's going to try to make, is we're, we're with the board also, any of you that can make, we'd love to have you at our all-staff meeting. They're somewhat perfunctory, but I think it would be a good way to kind of pass the torch and for our team to get to see Brian a little bit, so he's trying to work that out. But I think we're really good shape and appreciate the board's thoughtfulness on this, and Brian can't welcome you enough to this.
Thank you.
And I do want to, before Mertz, again, I've got to do something here, which is, we have awards of excellence, and, you know, time's going to run out on me if I don't quickly act on some of this. But one of the best people I've ever worked with in 40 years now, in any kind of capacity, who just represents everything you would want in a person, excellence, caring, just in attention to detail, which is not unimportant, is a person I've come to love and my friend. Mertz, I'd like to give you our coin of excellence, and thank you for all of that.
Thank you. You know, in a one-person office, it would be crazy for y'all to think I do this alone. Everybody helps me, and thanks so much. Cook.
Cook also.
Thanks, Mike.
You know, in state, we're also state workers, you know, so I'm a state worker like everyone else, and department directors get a handful of coins that you can hand out. And I just have been saving this one till towards the end, but if you remember, it's hard to believe because she exudes such confidence, and she really is so capable, but I remember you saying, "I don't know, I don't know if I can really do this." I said, "Trust me, you're the right person for the right time," and you've certainly proven it, so thank you, Mertz.
Thank you.
Now for your turn to introduce our team.
Yeah, when I can barely talk. Now, I'm going to introduce everyone around the table. You've met Mike Flanagan, chairman of the board, he's the state superintendent, and as we go around to the left, John Austin is president of the board, he resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge is the board's vice president, she's from Rochester Hills. The board's secretary is Michelle Fecto, from Detroit. Richard Ziley is board member from Dearborn. This year's Michigan Teacher of the Year is Melody Arubu, and she teaches at Keith Elementary. She's a third-grade teacher, that's in the Wald Lake Consolidated School District. As we go across the table, the governor's senior education policy advisor is Karen McThee, and then Eileen Weiser is in the next chair, and she will be here very shortly, she's board member from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss is board member from Detroit. Lupe Ramos-Montini, board member from Grand Rapids, she's the board's NASBY delegate, that's their association. And next to me is Pamela Pugh-Smith, she's from Saginaw, and she's the board's treasurer. Thank you.
And you're going to hear more of this in the presentation a little bit, but a lot of us are wearing this because this is the month of the young child, and you'll hear some of that in our response, and Susan's got hers hanging down there, but going to pick it up. And I also wanted to acknowledge, I had a chance to review it, I thought John did just an outstanding job as the lead author of the report released last week on Michigan's blue economy, I hope you've all had a chance to see it, but really outstanding work. I think this is something that, you know, he's a good policy thinker, and I really admire the way you're going to be able to help us rethink this state, the great state we're in, John. Okay, now we're going to run right to committee of the whole. Committee of the whole, the first item is presentation on Child Development and Care Program. It's an overview and look at upcoming opportunities. Joining us will be Susan, and Lisa, and Renee. I think you're all coming to the table, is that correct?
Correct.
And while they're coming here, I'll just mention that Child Development and Care Program in Michigan, it provides low-income families with access to high-quality childcare opportunities. And there's really significant opportunities in Michigan to revisit our current policies, and I can't tell you how much confidence I have in Susan and her team to help us think this through at the exact right time. Reauthorization of Child Care and Development Block Grant Act of 2014. So with that in mind, these are three people I just have great admiration for and are really changing the face of this in our state, so Susan, please.
Thanks, Mike. This is a special presentation for Mrs. Strauss, who requested this, I just wanted to acknowledge her request. I would like to provide a little context for this presentation before we actually begin the formal presentation. When Governor Snyder issued the executive order to form the Office of Great Start, he moved two significant early childhood programs from the Department of Human Services, Child Care Development and Head Start. He moved them purposely to join services that were already here in the Michigan Department of Education, the Early Childhood Education and Family Services. And he did this to consolidate the largest early childhood programs in the state in one location. It was very purposeful in what he was trying to do. This meant that Child Care, Head Start, and GSRP, Michigan's preschool program, were in one location. The intent was to focus, and I call it laser-like focus, on improving the quality in all three of these early learning programs. Quite frankly, this was recognizing the brain science and the research and the critical nature of the early years for children's development. It was also a recognition that it really didn't matter where a child was receiving services at that point in time, we had to assure a level of quality for early childhood development and learning. Secondly, soon after the office was formed in 2011, the legislature weighed in on the office, as the legislature would do, and said, "You need to develop a plan, where are you going with this office?" As you may recall, 1,600 Michiganders weighed in on where are we going with early childhood and what do we need to change. This effort produced, as I call fondly the Bible, the Great Start, Great Investment, Great Future Report, the Plan for Early Learning and Development in Michigan. One of the priority recommendations in that report was to redesign the childcare subsidy system so that recipients can access high-quality early learning services. And that the childcare subsidy, as it was originally formed and designed in 1996 as a work support service, should be redesigned to be an early learning program. We're busily and moving forward in that redesign. Today, you will hear from both Lisa Walhaven about what work is going on in the Child Care Development Fund Program, and from Renee DeMarz Johnson about what work we are able to actually achieve with the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant. You will also hear about the positive policy changes that have been enacted just in March of this year by the governor in a positive supplemental that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. Finally, this is the half-full part of it, you will see the patterns of chronic disinvestment in childcare in Michigan over the last 10 years. We are obviously hoping to change that, but you will see what our history has been. Lisa?
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Lisa.
And Lisa's Director of Child Development and Care. Renee's Director of Early Childhood Development and Family Education. They're formal roles, but...
Looks like everybody has the slides, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. Susan's already given you a little bit of a backdrop about this being a federally funded program with really two primary purposes. One of those purposes is to help support low-income families and parents with accessing affordable, high-quality care. And the second focus of the funding for this program is around ensuring that we are improving the quality of all care settings in Michigan. And that happens through childcare licensing, it happens through quality rating improvement system, and other quality activities that are available. The Office of Great Start in the Department of Education is the lead for this federal block grant in Michigan, but we implement this program in collaboration with many partners. And every three years, we submit a state plan that outlines how we will achieve those two primary goals of this federal funding. That next state plan will be due March 1st of 2016, so that really ties into the opportunities that Susan was alluding to and referencing in her introduction. When you think about who benefits from this program, children, birth through age 12, benefit because this allows their families to receive support for them to attend an early learning program or a childcare program, which even includes before and after-school programs. In fiscal year 14, 35,503 children benefited from this program. Parents benefit because it provides them with assistance and support with the cost of care of attending those early learning opportunities. In fiscal year 14, we had 20,132 childcare cases. So those are the parents who were receiving the support. Childcare providers benefit because they are providing the early learning opportunities for the children and receiving a reimbursement for providing those opportunities. In fiscal year 14, we had 11,925 providers who received a reimbursement for caring for a child who is eligible for the subsidy assistance.
Richard, do you have something at that point?
Yeah, just, I'm trying to jot down the numbers here, the children benefited were 5,000? 35,000, okay. And 20,000 parents, and what was the number of the providers again?
11,925.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On that note, welcome, Eileen Weiser.
Sorry about that, expressly problems.
No problem.
So as we continue to think about who does the Child Development and Care Program serve, we know that 54% of children under the age of five in the United States are in the care of a non-parent, a non-parental care arrangement at least once a week, and we know that...
You said 54%?
Nationally. And we know that from the U.S. Census Bureau data. In Michigan, that number is 64% of children under five are in a non-parental care arrangement at least once a week. When we think about what does high-needs children mean in relationship to the Child Development and Care Program and the subsidy that it offers, it's for children birth through age 12 in a variety of childcare settings. And in order for eligibility in this program, the family needs to be at or below 121% of the federal poverty limit, and for a family of three, that's around $23,880 annually. They are a recipient of DHS cash assistance programs, they might also be receiving social security income, which is another type of assistance, they might be a foster care child, and they might have an active child protective services case. So that's kind of what defines them as high-needs. In order for the parent to be eligible and qualified for the assistance, they need to be working, they need to be engaged in completing high school or education and training, they might be involved in a family preservation activity, which might be a therapy or rehabilitative service, or they might be participating in an approved activity. And an approved activity is a little bit broader, gives some flexibility around training and secondary education. In Michigan, the majority of our cases are because the family is income-eligible and because someone in the family is working. Those are our primary reasons. In, across the states, one of the requirements of the federal block grant is that you give parents choice in regards to the type of childcare setting that they choose for their child. In Michigan, we have four different provider types. The first three that you see listed on your slide are called licensed or registered providers, which means that they're monitored by the state and they're meeting certain requirements that the state puts forth. The last bullet, the unlicensed providers, are providers who meet certain eligibility criteria, but they are not monitored or licensed by the state. For the licensed and registered providers, we currently have around 10,400 of them in the state. They may or may not care for children who receive the CDC subsidy. That is a choice that they get to make. And we currently have 5,706 unlicensed providers who are caring for children receiving the This next slide is one of those glimpses into the history that Susan mentioned, to give you an idea of choices that, over time, parents have made related to where their children are in early learning settings. And you can see that, over time, we've had a shift. So this shows you that currently we have 70% of our subsidy children in the care of a licensed or registered provider, but that hasn't always been the case. If you look at the 2009 data, we had a little bit over 83,000 children at that time receiving the childcare subsidy, and 62% of them were actually in the care of an unlicensed provider. And now that shifted, so that 70% are in the care of a licensed or registered provider. We think that that shift has really been attributed to a significant policy change in 2010, which required the unlicensed providers to attend a health and safety orientation training prior to receiving the subsidy payment, as well as beginning to conduct criminal history checks for those providers and their adult household members. Now for some program realities. This slide always makes me a little bit sad because it's kind of grim, but this is what we're working to change. This is what we're working on. So as you can see, we have work to do, and we are fully engaged in that. Michigan's income-eligibility thresholds for the families who participate in this program have not changed since 2003. And we, according to 2013 data that's been collected from the states, we have the second lowest income threshold in the nation.
And to be clear, what would change that? What action would be necessary to change that?
Policy change by the legislature and the governor to change the eligibility threshold.
So again, that means that for a family of three, your income has to be at $23,880 or less to access the assistance of this program. Another area where we have struggled is our provider reimbursement rates, particularly for toddlers, as an example, we are the 10th lowest in the nation for our reimbursement rate for toddler care. Nationally, the recommendation from our funding body, the Office of Child Care, is that you provide subsidy payments at the 75th percentile, which would mean that the family has access to 75% of the choices within their area. Our current provider rates range between the 3rd and the 30th percentile of access for families, depending on the type of provider chosen and the age of the child. So you can see that we are well below the recommended 75th percentile. The last item is the maximum number of hours of assistance. This is another area where we've seen policy changes over the years that have had an impact. In 2011, the maximum number of hours was reduced to 80 hours in a two-week time period. That is different than a majority of other states who actually reimburse providers and families for the time that they need for childcare. In 2014, we did have a legislative policy change proposal, which increased the hours back to 90 in a biweekly period, which actually did allow us to provide some minimal reimbursement for travel time, lunch hours, those kinds of items. Historically, in 2002, the maximum number of hours was at 140 for a two-week period. So at our highest point, we ran 140 hours for a two-week period, and at our lowest point, 80 hours for a two-week period. Another grim slide. This is our funding trends. It shows you a little bit about how our appropriations have looked for this program, as well as what our caseload trends look like for this program. The appropriation for this program is based on something called caseload projections, and that's something that's done every May, and when they look at what our caseloads are, that's how they determine what the next year's appropriation will be. So as our policies have remained stagnant or become more restrictive in some of the examples that I just shared, you can see that our appropriations have continued to drop over that 10-year history that Susan was mentioning.
Cassandra?
Yeah, so everything I've seen suggests that there are more and more children in needy families. Why is the caseload dropping? I mean, is it the chicken or the egg, which comes first?
I think that we have some theories on why the caseloads might be dropping. Part of our theory has been how the economy has been in Michigan over the last several years, and people meeting the eligibility requirements for receiving the assistance. We know that some other policy changes for other assistance programs, for example, time limits for other assistance programs. Often, CDC cases have closed when those time limits have been reached, and families have not been given a good explanation about their ability to continue with their CDC benefits, even though their other benefits may be ending. So we think those are a couple of the bigger reasons for caseload reductions.
So is the CDC benefits tie-barred to those other benefits that are time-limited?
They are not.
Okay.
They are not.
They are not.
I was going to save this to the end, but one of the things that I asked the team to do was to give to Cassandra's committee specific recommendations on what you might recommend in terms of actions that would mitigate some of these issues. It's one of the things we want to take advantage of with the presentation today.
The CDC program covers children of what ages?
Birth to 12.
12, okay.
I think the other thing that we wanted to mention about the appropriations is there, over time, have been multiple funding sources that have supported this program. So we have our CCDF federal appropriation, we also have a requirement to match with state funds or general fund dollars, and we have also, in the past, had the support of TANF dollars, so Temporary Assistance for Needy Families dollars. And over time, both the general fund contribution has decreased, and we have actually lost the TANF appropriation. So in 2012, we no longer receive TANF dollars to support this program. So we wanted to make sure you kind of knew there were multiple factors in association with that appropriation. The governor's budget recommendation, which Susan also alluded to, has proposals that will help us in our redesign efforts to continue to work to support ensuring children have access to high-quality programs and preparedness for kindergarten readiness, as well as early literacy development. So now, let's move from a little bit of the grim to the possibilities and really look at the program vision. Susan's already talked about the executive order and that vision for moving the program here. She's talked about the Great Start, Great Investment, Great Future Report. All of those provide tremendous opportunities for us to shift the thinking and the mindset about the Child Development and Care Program and the childcare subsidies into really melding with other early learning opportunities that children have as well. So here are, on this slide, just a brief look at some of the things that we're starting to work on, but we want to share some really specific examples with you of the work. So 12-month eligibility is one of three slides that you're going to see. These next three slides are the major policy changes that are helping us move towards this shift. These three policy changes were approved in a supplemental that Susan already mentioned, and we are working towards a June implementation, so a June implementation this year. They are also included in the governor's fiscal year 16 budget proposal. The first one around eligibility is a real necessity for families who are working and who are low-income, because cost of care can be one of the biggest barriers that families face, and this helps provide that needed support. It also provides continuity of care, which is... which is critical in terms of positive outcomes for children related to attachment and cognitive abilities. This 12-month eligibility will provide needed financial security for those families and provide that continuity of care opportunity for children. Current policies make it difficult for families because minimal changes can impact their eligibility. This change allows us to eliminate the majority of reporting requirements for families. So when a family is told that they are eligible for the CDC subsidy, they will truly be eligible for 12 months. They won't have an interruption in that eligibility. It gives providers stability in terms of knowing that those children will be enrolled in their program for that continuous 12 months. So they're not worried about children coming in and out of their programs. It also reduces some of the administrative work for the DHS local office staff who are doing the eligibility determinations. Our second major policy change that was included in the supplemental is around exit income. So this gets a little bit at Mike's question as well. So this will allow a family to continue to receive the subsidy as their income is increasing. Program entry is at 121% or below of federal poverty. This will extend eligibility to 250% of federal poverty, which puts us more in line with the Great Start Readiness Program, GSRP program, in terms of their eligibility requirements. So let me give you a practical example. We have a situation now with our current eligibility income that creates a real cliff for families. Right now, the eligibility scale is entry at 121 and exit at 121. So you have a mom, two children, working. She's making $11 an hour. She does really well in her job. She gets a 50 cents an hour raise, which means that she's making a little bit over $1,000 more for the year. She would no longer be eligible to continue to receive the subsidy under current policy. That would mean that for her, her childcare cost would go from about $2,900 a year to $18,000 a year. So this policy is significant because it allows those working families who are trying to reach that self-sufficiency, the ability to continue to receive the assistance as their income is increasing. Third policy change, tiered reimbursement, is a strategy to help us continue to increase access to high-quality care. It helps to make that care more available to children and helps us focus on increasing their outcomes. This next slide gives you a glimpse at our current reimbursement rates that we've already mentioned briefly. Last July, we did implement our first iteration of tiered reimbursement. So this is allowing us to expand tiered reimbursement. Last summer, it was for three-, four-, and five-star programs. This policy change allows us to add two-star programs. So increasing that range of opportunities for families. If a family chooses a three-, four-, or five-star rated program, we are waiving their co-pay. So that means the provider receives the exact reimbursement amount that you see in this chart. And then there's no co-pay deducted for the family. So the way to look at this chart is there's what we call the base rate. And that's the line that says current rate. So if you're a provider who doesn't have a star rating or you have a one-star rating, you would get that rate, depending on the age of the child and the care setting. If you're a two-star provider, you're going to get 25 cents more an hour. If you're a three-star provider, 50 cents more an hour. Four-star, 75 cents more an hour. Or five-star, $1 more an hour. And that might not sound overly significant to you, but I wanted to give you an example to put it in a little bit of perspective. I've mentioned that 75th percentile and making sure families have access to care choices. These rates actually start to help us move towards the 75th percentile of the 2013 market rate survey that we conducted to see what the cost of care was in Michigan. So with these rates, if you are a family or a group home provider and you have a five-star rating, your payment rate would be 10 cents less than the 75th percentile. If you're a center provider who is caring for an infant or a toddler, it will be 25 cents less than the 2013 market rate survey rate. If you're a center caring for preschool children, it gets us $1.25 away from the market rate survey in 2013. This next slide gives you a glimpse of programs who are currently participating in Great Start to Quality, our quality rating improvement system. It shows you the number of programs who are rated at three-, four-, or five-stars. And we currently have 2,087 providers across the state. And these providers care for all children, not just subsidy children, who have a three-, four-, or five-star rating. There was one more policy proposal in the governor's fiscal year 16 budget. This one was not included in the supplemental. So we are still waiting on fiscal year 16 budget information. But this increases childcare licensing consultants. This is important because health and safety is really the foundation of quality care and is a paramount concern for families and parents who are looking for care. Currently, Michigan has a ratio of 150 programs to one licensing consultant. This policy change would allow us to reduce that ratio to 1 to 98, which is the national average. The recommended amount is 1 to 50. So again, moving us closer to the national recommendation. And this is in line with a federal audit that was done by the Office of Inspector General last summer, indicating that we didn't have adequate licensing consultants to ensure health and safety in Michigan. Susan also briefly mentioned reauthorization and some opportunities that we have. This was the first time in 18 years that this program was reauthorized by Congress. It became effective in November of 2014. And it really does create a better balance between promoting healthy development and supporting success for those low-income working families. It has a lot of requirements about health and safety, continuity of care, veteran forming, people providing consumer education about choices that are available to them, and improving the quality of learning. So every three years, we will be submitting a state plan that indicates how we're meeting the law, the requirements of the law. While this new law has numerous requirements, they all have different effective dates. Some of them are very specific in terms of when they are effective. Many of them will be effective September 13 of 2016. So a big project that we have in front of us is continuing to evaluate that new law and bringing together an advisory committee to help us analyze that and identify with that advisory group and additional stakeholders any implementation plans or policy changes that we may need to take to continue to improve this program. There will be public hearings prior to the submission of the plan. And we do plan to come back to the board with another presentation prior to the submission of that state plan. This slide just gives you some really high-level bullets of some of the key features of the reauthorization. Again, focused on health and safety, high-quality programs, and removing barriers for families. The market rate survey, I've also mentioned in terms of that 75th percentile and determining the cost of care. We are currently conducting our market rate survey for our next state plan that's due. We expect that the report for that will be done at the end of May. And it will help us identify the cost of care based on the type of care, the age of the child, and the geography in the state or where the care is being provided. And I've already mentioned that we're between the 3rd and 30th percentile now, depending on the age of the child and the type of care. So this will help us to continue to evaluate and look at that tiered reimbursement strategy to continue to address reimbursement rates. And now I'm going to transition it to Renee to talk a little bit about Race to the Top.
Right, so you all, except probably Pamela and now Karen, heard a presentation last fall with regard to more in-depth about the projects that we are using the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Funds for. And we wanted to make sure that you recognize that the funds are being used to strengthen the system. And I wanted to give you some high-level key ways in which we're going to help the system with those funds. And in the interest of time, I'm going to really look at my script a lot so that I don't miss anything. So in concert with the Childcare Development Fund, we're really trying to impact quality across the early care and education field with these Race to the Top Funds. You might recall that Project 2 was designed to increase the number of providers who are actively participating in that tiered quality rating improvement system, Great Start to Quality, with a primary focus on home-based providers in targeted communities across the state. And meanwhile, Project 4 was going to be able to make some high-quality early learning and development programs more accessible through offering childcare scholarships that can supplement those subsidies that you heard about today and the parent pay that parents are having to contribute. So ensuring access to quality care for all children will be impacted by the activities within these two projects specifically. Project 3, which has its focus on the health and safety of children while in care, will seek to protect children and promote their health across all childcare settings with one of the Race to the Top activities in this project ensuring standards of the Great Start to Quality for both physical and social-emotional health that are aligned with national best practices. Project 5 in Race to the Top invests in the childcare workforce through access to credit-bearing coursework by enhancing our TEACH scholarships, as well as offering online content to lead toward the Child Development Associate credential. And the Race to the Top Project 6, which focuses on assuring data within the state longitudinal data system and additional reporting is realized as that will be necessary for us to drive improvements across the early care and education system. And finally, in Race to the Top Project 7, we designed activities to strengthen family engagement by developing informational materials, encouraging authentic partnerships between parents and providers, and supporting providers in building stronger relationships. And for my two cents, those activities in Project 7 are the bedrock for the peace of mind that families have when they're accessing out-of-home placements and recognizing best outcomes for children, no matter the childcare setting that the family selects.
So as you see, we have a relatively steep hill we're climbing. However, obviously, we are determined and are somewhat pleased that there are what I call positive signs on the horizon. One of the positive signs that may seem insignificant but was huge is that in the early literacy proposal that the governor put forth, childcare was embedded in that proposal, which is an incredibly strong policy statement recognizing the importance of quality childcare in early learning and in early literacy. Quite frankly, we're not going to get to third-grade reading if we are not starting earlier in this process. And that involves improving the quality of childcare. So we have work to do, but I wanted you to see where we are at this point to understand what I call our situation at this point and where we're going to try to drive. And I think somebody said it and they nailed it. This is all about policy and making the right policy choices.
So with that, as I hinted to earlier, we'll bring Susan, her team, and our legislative team will bring specific recommendations to the legislative committee because it can get lost in the presentation today, goes with clarity in what's federal, what's state. And with that in mind, what are some questions or comments from board?
Thank you. Thank you for the clear presentation. Thank you for the work that's been going into this. And thank you for the summary and where we have to head. I remember that we lost TANF, but I cannot remember how. I thought it was a federal...
Eileen, I can't hear you. Just be...
If I sit right next to you. Well, I am, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Is it a matter of microphone projection or is it just...
It's very loud out there.
Okay, it's very loud out there, so should I be... Because I am at the end.
So is Karen.
Don't hear the end. Well, I just was thanking them.
I heard that part.
You heard that part. So what I was asking about was TANF, the assistance program, as to why, what exactly the reason was for Michigan not having it anymore. I can't remember if it's a federal reason or whether it's a compliance issue or an application issue from us.
So let me make sure that I'm clear. Michigan didn't lose their TANF funding. The CCDF program, or the Child Development and Care Program, is no longer receiving TANF dollars in our appropriation to support our activities. So those TANF dollars that are coming to Michigan are being used to support other things now.
To step back and be fair about it, if you look at, and Eileen, you weren't here when I said in the beginning, we have a chronic disinvestment in childcare in Michigan over the last 10 years. That's also a period of incredible stress within Michigan and our financial situation. DHS made a decision to move the TANF money into other services rather than childcare. So TANF, we didn't lose TANF or childcare. It was a policy choice by the Department of Human Services. That's another reason why it's so critical that childcare was moved over here and framed within the Michigan Department of Education as an early learning program rather than a work-support program so that we could give it the attention that it needs.
So then, one more question on that line. How is it being used currently? How are the TANF dollars being used currently? Do we, can you address that or do we need to, you don't know?
Well, we can follow up, but they're being used at the Department of Human Services.
Well, I'm just curious as to whether, now that we are making a significant investment in early childhood, that needs to be thought through as to whether those dollars are still in the best place for the goals that the state has in early childhood.
Why don't we do two things? We'll do a follow-up with specifics on your question, but we'll also kind of include that thinking into the recommendations we'll bring to the legislative committee. Because it may be that, the inference could be that the TANF money needs to be spent to some degree where it is now. And that's the part that Susan's saying about to be fair. But it may need additional. Because overall, I mean, we don't want to not be thankful for other resources that have been put into early childhood in general, but this is a different... resources that have been put into early childhood in general, but this is a different...
What I was trying to say is that DHS was under incredible stress during the last, and so they had to make tough decisions about where resources could go, as well as the Children's Rights Settlement and moving money around to address that. So I just want to be fair that they've had to make some tough policy decisions.
And I would also say that fairness at a certain point in time may not be state policy as we head forward. So I think it is important just to point that out and then to figure out whether, you know, the, it's, it's, you, when we have discussions like this, and then I go back to, what was it, a year and a half ago when we found out that so many districts were not using farm money for breakfast because of the complexities in their staffing? And so, you know, all of these discussions can tweak things, and there's money in places where it's used, it can be extraordinarily effective or less effective, or not used at all well. And I just want to make sure that we're, since you're doing this kind of work in such depth, that we have a more comprehensive discussion about how it used to be so we can figure out what it should look like going forward.
Right, that makes sense. Kathleen, and then Richard, and then John.
Well, I wanted to thank you too. Very good presentation and analysis. And I've done some really good things. You have done some really good things. And the rating system and the increased quality, I think, is really terrific. But it's dismaying, as you described, the disinvestment. And if you listen to what's been said and the governor talks about, he's putting more money into early childhood than we ever did before. You don't hear anything about a disinvestment from other sources. And of course, that money comes out of the K-12 budget, so it really isn't, additional money is just sort of redirected. So I, you know, we keep talking about, we have to do this, we have to do that, and then we don't want to pay, you know, want to increase taxes. So we have a real problem in Michigan. Not only Michigan, other parts of the country too, I'm sure have the same problem. Although some states have managed to raise, to increase taxes to improve education. And as you point out, Susan, the early childhood, emphasis on early, on early literacy, it has to start with early childhood. And, you know, when I've talked to kindergarten teachers who tell me that when the children come, they don't, they not only don't even know their real name, they know a nickname. They don't know their letters, they don't know numbers, they don't even know colors necessarily. I mean, it's just, it's hard for us to comprehend the children five years old who don't know those things. But it's, it is a fact. So the early childhood education, and really early childhood, is really essential. And of course, we've been pushing this for, for many years, and it's, it's great that there's more support for it now, the business community is behind it now, and that helps a lot. So I think that Eileen's point about checking on all the possible sources, but I really didn't realize how complicated the funding streams are. And that makes it difficult. And I don't know how all these, these, these individual providers, family providers, how do they cope, how do they learn all this, how do they get their reimbursement and how, it takes a lot of learning. So the training that you're doing must include all that, I presume.
Well, and some of the policies make it hard. Like as Lisa was talking about, the 12-month eligibility, the way it is now, a child can be there and the parent loses the eligibility because the mom gets a raise, and so then they lose the support, and then the provider says, I don't want to take childcare subsidy kids because they're inconsistent, we're not sure. So it is, I mean, it is...
I don't think anybody realizes how complicated this is. So what, have you drafted recommendations for changes in legislation that we might need? Or changes in policies for various departments that we could recommend to the governor?
Well, the legislature? The first three have been approved in the supplemental, which are the start of moving in the right direction, as well as the recommendation to increase the number of licensing consultants. And we will continue to provide additional recommendations. But we're turning a ship that's, it's, there's going to be ongoing recommendations, as well as, quite honestly, the language in the reauthorization is pretty extensive changes, and that's why I wanted to talk to you today, to say, we're going to be having to come to you with a lot of different policy changes to meet the requirements in the reauthorization. And there are going to be fiscal realities to those. So we'll be continuing as we go through the whole reauthorization process to come with additional recommendations.
And Kathy?
Because some of the legislative trade proposals could come to, we could, the legislative committee, we could approve them as a board.
Yeah, and that's what it's going to take to move these pieces, because it's going to take additional investments. Thank you.
And Kath, that's what I meant about, we would bring as a team, specific recommendations to the legislative committee.
Okay.
Interact with that then. It was Richard, and then John, and then Michelle, and Pam.
On the CDC funding trends, I wasn't quite sure if it was the downturn in appropriations that led to a downturn in childcare cases or downturn in childcare cases that led to a downturn in appropriations.
So through that caseload consensus process, they look at our current number of childcare cases, do a little bit of projecting about whether they think that will increase or decrease, and then that's what they base our appropriation on. So what that might mean is that we are not getting our full amount of federal funds that are available to us appropriated for the year by the legislature, because they're only appropriating enough to cover the cost of our projected cases.
So if the legislature would appropriate more funds, there'd be more federal funds available? Is that what you're saying?
So the federal funds, we are determined by formula that come to Michigan. But if the legislature appropriated our full federal appropriation, then we could have some latitude to do those policy changes and changes that Susan's talking about without always having to go through a legislative change to do that.
The reality right now is that we carry over federal money from year to year. We don't actually spend all the federal money on a annual basis that we have available to us. We carry it over because of the policy changes not being legislative so that we can actually use all the funding. And so it's like you're in a catch-22, and then that means that if the policy changes haven't been implemented, then you have less clients, and that's what's appro, so it's, it's this bad cycle that we're in. And quite honestly, I think we finally have broken the cycle a bit with the three policy changes that were approved. But we have to continue to do that and dog this because we have money that is sitting there, and I don't know who said it, but we aren't, the number of children who are eligible for the service, who are not receiving this service, is pretty phenomenal. And so there's, there's more than enough children who could actually receive these services that we're not getting to. So we have to be smarter about all of this.
John, Michelle, like others, I want to thank you for this work, and also thank Kathy for bringing this up to us, because it really is new information, at least to me. And as others, that Eileen and others were noting, we've, we're sort of happy and we're patting ourselves on the back, we're finally doing more for early childhood education. But behind that, alongside that, is this lack of real effort around childcare. And Susan, as you're saying, this is an important piece of the learning contribution to, for our young people. So I hope that by shining a spotlight on this and having specific recommendations that we all can endorse, we can say, look, our early childhood education expansion efforts are half-done and incomplete without serious attention to be better here. Thank you very much.
You know, I would call to attention on that note, it was the major advantage of the EO moving those things to us that allows us as a department and you as a board to actually have some impact on this. So I know that appropriately, there was a lot of attention last month on another one, but this one also was a big thing to help us get our arms around, as John just said, in a way that we can understand it first and foremost, and then secondly, have an impact on it along with the state board. Michelle, and then Pam.
Yeah, I agree that this is really critical, and as we look at wanting to have more third graders read and expecting more, it just makes sense to really do a better job than what we've been doing as far as getting more kids in. It's okay, I had a couple. So when you say policy changes, you're talking about the eligibility? If the eligibility was raised, the income limits was raised, that would be, that's what you're talking about?
That would be another policy change.
Okay. And why do you think people don't participate if they are eligible? Have you ever, has there been any research or consideration, any ideas as to why, how they're eligible, they don't participate?
You'd probably get three different answers. Why don't you start there and go through it?
We have been doing a little bit of looking. I think that there are some misconceptions, if you will, about what the eligibility criteria are. So we are planning to make those eligibility criteria more well-known, make them clearer so that people do understand how you can be eligible for the program. I think that's one.
And, and right along with that is the people who are working directly with the families in the local offices, making sure that they clearly understand, you know, the question that was raised earlier, well, what if they don't qualify for cash assistance anymore? Can they still get subsidy? Well, yeah, but if the person who's there to support them in navigating the system are not clear on that, then certainly that would be something that we need to make sure is, is going on.
Well, I collected the subsidy as a foster parent, and I used that, and it was very helpful, although I only paid for about half the cost of where I was sending my kids, because it was expensive where I kept going. So I also had some questions with regard to special education and, and kids who might, you know, be more difficult or maybe need to be screened or need additional services. Again, as, as a parent of someone who had a child with autism, I found that it was incredibly difficult to find childcare. And I know a lot of parents in my position that, you know, the, and I understand that, you know, you're, you're dealing with, you know, home-based or even, you know, more institutionalized settings. They, they just didn't, they weren't equipped, they weren't familiar, and they just rejected them. And I, as they, as they collect federal funds, I think it does sort of violate ADA. But, not sort of, I think it does violate ADA. Is there any, is there, you know, any requirement or thought or, you know, accommodations or like maybe extra subsidy? We talk about subsidy for quality, which I think is really, you know, a great idea as, as an incentive, but is there any thought given to how to increase availability to all kids, even kids with disabilities? That may be difficult.
Want to do it? You want me to?
Your question to the, the project that I...
I think there will be some opportunities for us to really look at the two questions that you're raising through the reauthorization. There is some very specific language in reauthorization that assures that states are addressing children with special needs, infants and toddlers, other populations. So I think those are areas that we need to continue to explore to provide better supports to providers, better connections to the systems pieces that Renee was talking about that exist. I think we have some opportunities with initiatives in Race to the Top to start to make those connections and provide more support to both parents and providers. But I think those are some areas where we'll be doing some, looking at, at some changes or modifications to what we're doing.
Thank you, Pam.
Again, I concur with everybody. Thank you for the presentation and for the important work that you're doing. My questions were, well, one of them is, there's quite a bit that's going on at the local levels through the local health departments and some of the community organizers to raise awareness of health outcomes and that link to early childhood development. And I'm wondering how much you all are informing or if you are at all informing any of that work. I know a lot of it is coming from Ingham County, so, and a lot of the work is being done through Michigan Public Health Institute, and I think that it's vital that you all would be able to inform that work because it's a national, I'm speaking of Raising of America and the national work that's being done, but that the local levels are using the tools that are provided through that national work, and just hoping that we're able to give the context as, as it plays out here in Michigan. So I don't...
Yeah, so my second full-time job is working with the Department of Community Health, which is now the Department of Health and Human Services. And that's how we first got acquainted, because we really do feel that the initiatives within the Department of Education and the Office of Great Start, we cannot reach those first three outcomes and impact the fourth outcome, the early childhood outcomes of children born healthy, developmentally on track, ready for school, and reading proficiently at third grade, without all of those foundational things with regard to health, you know, not just the Raising of America kinds of things that are being connected, but all of the work that our Department of Community Health and the local public health entities are doing around obesity and physical fitness and things like that. And so I think that we are contributing and trying to then embed that work here at the department across the divisions, really, because we certainly work with Kyle's team in the health area to make sure that we're working on safe, healthy schools and safe, healthy settings.
Very good. Yeah, that's some really great work, and they're really being able to spread this information and really build some advocacy. I just want to make sure that they're getting relevant information to Michigan. And then the other question that I had is in relation to community ventures through MEDC and wanting to know if you all are doing any, if there's any conversations at this level. I know, again, at local levels, there's, there's discussions, but, and that's to get the, well, the structurally unemployed to work. And so you all share some of the same goals, and so there's funding that's, there's wraparound services and/or funding that's provided, but there seems like there's some opportunity to, to work together. And I know that this was a big initiative of the governor as well as MEDC, and so that may be another opportunity to, to really...
We are not, no. Thank you.
It's a great suggestion. Thank you for that. I mean, sometimes we're still, we're still in our infancy, if you think about it, in terms of bringing these divisions together. And you just heard, I think it was Renee, that said even the challenges within our divisions here, making sure left-hand, right-hand, but that's a good tip. My son works at MEDC, I should know that.
And we're doing some of these things at local levels, so I mean, it would be so much better if we're doing it from both, at both ends.
Well, thank you, that's very helpful. Yes, ma'am?
There's a resource I just recently learned about. It's based out of Wayne State in the College of Nursing and School of Medicine, and it's called AHAQ, and it, health, educate, I'm not gonna, I hesitated because I don't remember the acronym. But one of the programs that they work on, and it's with Dr. Diane Chugani, who runs the Ace Program there, so you probably know her. They have a program where they will, will work to train people to become ABA, the Intervention Around Autism. And they, for instance, this summer, they have a free program where, because the insurance is now covering this type of treatment, it's a very promising treatment if it's done early, especially early on, before age five, where they'll train or, you know, connect people to training programs and almost instantly have a job. And it's, and they're behavior health tech, and they're looking to, they were looking to try to place them initially in Detroit Public Schools in early... them initially in Detroit Public Schools in early education programs, so that they would have a connection, so they, it also provides jobs in the community, the jobs pay between eleven to twenty dollars an hour, and they also provide a service to help early education programs in providing therapy to kids, you know, this huge population now that have this diagnosis. So I didn't know if you were aware of it, I had just met with them a couple of weeks ago, they are very, there's a huge demand, they can't get enough people to come into the program to get them certified to do this, there's a demand for these services, and there's not enough providers. And they would love to have them located in settings, school settings, to reach as many families, because it, you know, the long-term implications are, would be a huge cost savings if they could get the early intervention. So, I mean, I'd love to talk to you about it more, connect you with those folks, so.
That's good.
Okay.
Finally, I'll just mention that yesterday at Alliance, I asked folks to tune in on this, and I think they do, I think they're pretty conscientious. In the old days, you'd actually see them sitting here, and now they can do a little work, sit at their desk and tune in, because I, there's clearly still work to be done for folks to understand in the traditional so-called K-12 community about this new work we have in the department that we didn't have, and how it can have an impact on the very same goals. Third grade reading is one, obviously, one that suits inside, but in so many other ways, the health and safety of our kids. So I hope you're there, and we'll move on from there. Thank you guys, excellent job. Thanks, boards, for the questions and comments. We're gonna move right on to the presentation on the implementation of social studies standards. If you recall, we've done this over a period of months now, and this was the third one that we promised you, which was teacher prep and professional learning. Ask our team to join us here, which would be Linda Ford and Vanessa Kiesler, and then I think we've got a few folks in the audience who are called, you can see Jim Cameron there, but we've got some other resources in the, while you're getting settled. In fact, I'm gonna wait just a moment, so we get our appropriate, people need a minute for a break. Get our paper passed up.
Now we have technology envy. Remember when they told you we'd have no paper once we had technology?
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Felt like I was legal.
Where do you work now?
I think I work here.
How long they should commute?
Well, I currently, just about, but that will, we're moving, so sometime next month. Well, not here. I did it right. Cut it down to about 15 minutes.
My children.
My children. Not long gone, something's a little more, doesn't it? I don't know where they are, I don't know what they're doing. My oldest daughter lives in New York. I guess daughter actually lives in West Michigan, but they're on their own.
But you have a responsibility.
Oh, girl, and I was just sold breast.
Thank you.
He can pick up a chicken at Myers better.
From all those years.
It's good for you too.
That's true. Ask those questions, and they want a, thirty seconds.
I want to talk to Myers, and see if they'll expand there. Deliver, delivery.
And to also inventory choices.
They could, yeah, that'd be helpful, too. So far, so good. He's really self-sustaining, so he's fine.
Six of May.
It's on the sixth of May.
Okay, so we'll. Showing Brian the hardest part of the job, which is being respectful of people who actually employ you. Trying to find that balance of moving a meeting along, but not doing that too much.
It feels like I'm back in the job.
Okay. Well, let me just, Linda and Vanessa have joined us, and they come to the table, but I'd first of all like to welcome Linda, who's agreed to serve as the interim deputy superintendent. This is a position that we knew was open last fall, but even then, the plan was, we didn't know it would be Brian at the time, but I said, that's a spot we gotta leave open for a new person to make a, kind of a final decision on, so Brian and I are talking about process on that a little bit right now as we speak. This presentation, as I said, continues on the last couple of months, and it focuses on changes to the preparation and support of teachers, and the general support for implementation of instruction to support a revision of the social studies standards. Fewer, clearer, higher, you've heard those comments before, that's where we're headed again with this, that's the mantra. With that, I'd turn it over to our team.
Thanks, Mike. This month, all we want to focus on most explicitly are considerations for teacher preparation, what we might need to do there if we're changing the standards and the methodology for teaching, as well as professional learning for teachers that are currently in the field, and so that'll be our focus. And then also, I think we want to also spend a minute on our civil rights initiative and some of the work that's going on there. Just as an overview, remember that we are looking at changing the standards in order to better align them with the framework revisions, the C-3 framework, and the ARC of Inquiry, which is going to help students have more control of their learning, and help them delve deeply into issues in our society and what the solutions might be, and have them formulate their own answers to that. So we want to move the teacher more into the facilitator role, which takes a change in thinking, and we also want to look at more interventions for students.
So like Mike said, one of the things we wanted to talk about today was a bit about how we ensure we have the workforce that's ready to implement these standards, both the workforce that's in the pipeline coming in, and the workforce that's actually out in the field right now. And anytime you adopt new standards, whether they're in social studies or any subject, you have to ensure that teachers understand what they are and how to teach them effectively. And so we have both considerations in terms of teacher preparation as well as professional learning. With our teacher preparation, and we have Sarah Kate Levand from the Office of Professional Preparation Services with us if we have more specifics, but in general, when new standards are adopted for K-12, there's a process of bringing those standards to the prep institutions and saying, these are the new standards, this is what they do, and how can, our Office of Professional Preparation Services works with the institutions to say, how can we support you in supporting your teachers and understanding how to teach these? So that would occur here as well, if these standards were adopted. And kind of brainstorming with them, or working with them, supporting them in specific meetings about what's upcoming and how do you get teachers into that. So again, that's the kind of method we've used with the new math and ELA standards over the last few years, and we would use that here as well. And then thinking about, you know, the standards that govern teacher preparation, the in-task standards, focus on getting our teachers prepared in the way they're going to be expected to teach, and that's, again, part of, you know, inquiry-based learning, or how you use technology, all sorts of things about how you approach delivering instruction in the classroom. So the standards governing teacher prep work on that, so it's kind of in alignment of bring the K-12 standards along with the standards around teacher prep, and make sure our teachers get the exposure in their preparation institutions that they need. Just in case you wanted to know a little bit about our certification landscape in social studies, or in the social sciences, really, we have a variety of certifications, and they kind of have grade bands, and then they have some specific content areas, so you see them listed there. And I think one project that we're working on, and it's not only with social studies, but in general, is looking at the current grade level certifications and different grade bands, different ways to organize. So within that K-8, is that the best sort of grade level certification for social studies, or for a variety of subjects, or are there other ways to align? So OPPS is in the process of examining that, particularly against our areas of high interest. So social studies is one, but another one we're looking at right now is early literacy, and how do you make sure that we're really preparing teachers in early literacy?
You're looking at what's?
Early literacy?
Oh.
So do we have the right kinds of certifications to support that initiative? So again, this is, social studies is one piece of the overall work, but making sure that our, that our certifications align with that. And then I think Linda's gonna take most of this slide, but we just wanted to point out, while there's, you know, teachers coming out of the pipeline each year, there are, I had OPPS look at the numbers, there are about eighty-eight thousand people in Michigan who have a social studies endorsement. So that doesn't mean they're all employed right now, or that doesn't, you know, but a lot of people out there who already have been through preparation, and who are either teaching or could teach, or have left the state and are teaching elsewhere, and so how we support that bulk of teachers is really a huge part of this initiative.
Excuse me, how many teachers did you say have a social?
Eighty-eight thousand educators have a social studies certification. That doesn't mean they're all teaching right now in Michigan, but that's how many active, active certifications we have.
So that's a big group of people, even if you take a lesser number out of that. And our job, then, is to provide the professional learning for those teachers, so that they're prepared to teach using the new ARC of Inquiry, in other words, going deeper into a subject matter area, and trying to delve into the rationale for a pro or a con on any piece, and then having the basic knowledge and skill sets that they need to have in order to make those decisions. So we're going to need to get into a place where we can have job embedded opportunities, and that's always difficult, but that is probably going to rely on our ISDs to help us with that, and provide for teachers the opportunity to learn about something and then go back and practice it in their classroom, and come back and have discussion, because this is, this is a different kind of a way to think about learning. If you look at that picture, these are kids who are on a dig here in Michigan, and they have the opportunity to actually go in and find artifacts from a food source back in the time when others were occupying that territory, and then come back to the classroom and discuss what that might mean for the development of Michigan and the implications. So that makes it real, and it's hand-on, but now a teacher needs to think about all of the implications for that question. What might you want to discuss with students in that area? Also, we need to think about learning progressions. The question you ask of a third grader around some topic, we used citizenship last month, is very different from the question you ask of a 12th grader, and what is the meaning of citizenship and what might it look like? And then we want to apply all of the instructional resources that are available within Michigan and other states to this initiative, and so with that in mind, here are some of the things that already exist. When I talk about the MC3 documents, this is a set of materials that was developed across the state, the initiative was led by Oakland County, and so these materials are available already out in the state and are being shared broadly. We also have things like the Michigan Historical Society and Center, we have Michigan Civil Rights Commission, the TRIG initiatives, the TRIG group has been able to pull together a social studies textbook that is available online, or will be shortly, and so those kinds of materials are going to be available in a different kind of an atmosphere than the one we're used to. Helping teachers know how to work and manipulate through that curriculum as well is a challenge with us. We are working closely with the various teacher support groups in the social studies realm, as well as ISDs, to try and make this all become a reality. Here are some of the professional development opportunities around this topic, just this summer, as you'll notice, June and August are gonna be very busy all across the state with some of the learning that we would like teachers to be involved in. Finally, you asked a little bit about civil service, civil rights considerations, and where we were with that topic, and I remember we've shared with you previously that the Southern Poverty Law Center gave us an F, Michigan got an F for our civil rights work and our support materials. So we are creating K-12 content expectations at this point in time in conjunction with civil rights groups in Michigan. We are developing instructional materials, and we're also gonna be providing assessment items through the lens of the C-3 framework for the assessment group that Vanessa leads. We are focusing primarily on the needs to work with African-Americans, Arab-Americans, Hispanic, and Native Americans in this initiative right now. We recognize that there are other groups that may need attention in the state, but those are the four we're going to focus on now, they are the primary groups in the state. And with that, Mike, we'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, guys. Board members, comments, questions? Kathleen?
Thank you. So I was so, this is my day here, I've been pushing your own childhood into social studies for a long time. So it's been great having these presentations and all these things that you're doing, because I think social studies had given short shrift with all the emphasis on reading and math and STEM and, so it's really important to, we have to teach children how to become good citizens, active, participatory, informed citizens. So this is really good, and to change the way we do it is really essential, because probably we haven't always done it the best, most effective way. So this is exciting, and I'm glad you're doing the, working with the teacher preparation institutions. That's critical, too. I mean, I think you're hitting all the right, you're hitting all the right places and all the right buttons, so I'm really delighted to hear all this, so thank you very much.
Melanie? Yes, ma'am?
I was just curious about resources and materials, because I think, you know, having the standards is a great start, but often the lack of resources and materials, or the inconsistency from district to district, will impact the type of instruction that students get in social studies, so I was just wondering if after everything's in place, the department will be recommending specific materials or resources? I'm not a huge fan of textbooks, but, you know, guides, you know, for science, we have science kits, which is where you get everything that you might need to teach. For social studies, we don't often get anything, yeah. So I was just wondering if there's anything being developed, or anything that the department will endorse, so that districts will have consistent materials.
Since this is a local-controlled state, we would primarily be looking to all of the groups that support social studies in Michigan, and there are a variety of them, historic, history groups, geography group, et cetera, and also groups like this provide materials. We certainly would work with them, but we wouldn't make any one suggestion for the state. But we would also work with the ISDs to provide guidance based on what's appropriate in that area of the state as well.
Now, if we were Texas.
I forgot.
Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to ask, what is TRIG?
That's the Technology Readiness Infrastructure Grant.
Oh.
That we've talked about before, that's allowing us to get ready for online assessments, as well as making them move to online teaching.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna spend some time in my report on the assessments, it started yesterday, but as an example, it was a hundred and, what's the millions that was spent on TRIG?
It's a hundred and forty-one point two million, point five million, over three years.
Right, and there may be, well, I'll speak to it later, that's that investment that really has helped us position ourselves to be able to go online, starting yesterday, and we have some numbers about that. Kathleen, please.
So, having been in a meeting with Speaker Bolger, was it almost two years ago? Yes, with President Austin and the superintendent, it is still clear that even though this isn't our college and career-ready standards, that the legislature would like prior notice on this issue. And I know that that's being done with science in quite well right now. Have you, what is the timeline for how that's going to be done with this, and where are we in bringing it to the board for approval?
We have been working with the legislature with both reports at the same time, and so as our staff has been going over and working with the individual legislators, they have been reporting on science and social studies at the same time, and so we are moving along nicely with that. I think we have another couple of weeks' worth of meetings with staff there. Our next steps are a little more, are gonna take us a little longer, we are going to, now that the standards have been written and edited and are now ready, we're going to bring in another group of teachers and Michigan educators, higher education, ISDs, all of those, to look at them and raise any questions that they might have, and any issues, so it'll be like the final edit, if you will, before we bring them to you. I'm anticipating that it will be after the summer break, before we're back to you, but probably August, September, somewhere in there.
And I would like to say that that's such a huge step, because if teachers are sold on it, and have invested in it, then the conversations tend to be different for people who believe in what they do, I mean, for the public who have those people as teachers. I don't know whether this is a volatile set of standards, I know that there have been people who've asked me about them over the last two or three years, I don't know if other board members, John is just simply laughing.
I'll always be. That's like a loaded question, how long have you been, stop beating your wife?
No, but nobody has asked me about social studies online for about a year, so there were a lot of inquiries around the time that the hearings were held two summers ago. So I don't know whether these will, whether our public hearing process is important, but I'm very excited to hear that you.
on it and have invested in it, then the conversations tend to be different for people who believe in what they do, I mean, for the public who have those people as teachers. I don't know whether this is a volatile set of standards. I know that there have been people who've asked me about them over the last two or three years. I don't know if other board members, John is just simply laughing.
I'll always be.
That's like a loaded question. How long have you been, stop beating your wife?
No, but nobody has asked me about social studies online for about a year. So there were a lot of inquiries around the time that the hearings were held two summers ago. So I don't know whether these will, whether a public hearing process is important, but I'm very excited to hear that you're doing the teachers first and starting with that. Is the legislature commenting at all in these meetings on whether or not they feel more publicity is required or more input than just the school personnel? Because that was the problem before with the Common Core hearings. Everybody was part of that process in 2010, but with term limits, the legislature in 2014 had no knowledge of what was going on. So you're covering them beautifully, you're working with the teachers, but the public perception of whether this is being done in the dark, I've had so many people say to me that they can't watch these state board of ed meetings. They can't, they don't have the time to go online and wait for the video to come to the right spot. They don't have access to the information that we're getting. So do you have any better sense of whether that's, besides what John is nodding his head and shaking and saying, no, no, no? What do you think?
Our current plan right now is just to go out for public comment in our standard manner, which would be to bring it to you, get permission to go out for public comment because essentially the standards look good, and then have a six-week, four-week window where people can comment. We hadn't given any broader thought to that, but it certainly is a worthwhile suggestion we can look into and see if there's some forums wherein we might do that.
I think that asking the legislature that question would be important, because they won't, we don't have a history of doing something different than our traditional practice, but they wouldn't know that. And it didn't work last time. It worked in 2010, but it didn't work for different people in 2014, the history on it, so.
I mean, I'll just say this, this wasn't the team, but I've had folks that I've interacted with, I've met with all the leadership, and I've met with the chairs of the committees, and I've had one or two just bluntly say, well, we're with you till we're not. So, I mean, I took that as, we should, I think it's a great idea, by the way, to try to get some kind of a video that goes right to the spot where some of these discussions are going on and make that widely available. That's an excellent point in addition to kind of traditional public. But I also, my alarms went off when, you know, it was kind of with a smirk, and it was by two different people. Yes, and one of each party, by the way. So I think there is such a broad spectrum on views related to social studies that there will be some controversy no matter what our team does. Having said that, the more we can get folks involved, and particularly teachers in the field and the general public, I think that then the legislature will feel there's, I don't know what I'm saying, cover in the best sense, that they're able to say they have confidence in the system that we've used to try to get these standards in place.
And that we've been transparent and that we've been proactive, which, as you change children's trajectories in education with new standards, the sense of powerlessness that parents have over the knowledge that's used to do that is profound if they're activists. So unless we meet that, unless we find a way to get it out to the public and get people thinking, we will have backlash, and I think we can prevent a lot of it.
That's good advice, and that's accurate. And our team here, I mean, Ben, I see, you know, has led kind of and organized, along with the whole legislative team, but a lot of these meetings are ongoing regularly. I think they're very productive. I've had my own, as I said, my own set of some of these. And then maybe just briefly, our own team, why don't you introduce our team that works with you on these?
So for my part, Greg Dionne, who is the supervisor for the Curriculum and Instruction Unit. And then Jim Cameron, you've seen at the table before, and he is our consultant. And thank you, Mike, because this gives me the opportunity to call out that he has just received a governor's appointment as a member of the State Historical Records Advisory Board. So he is pretty well-known in geography and historical subjects.
And over here we have Scott Tony. Am I saying your last name right? Sorry. We're going to introduce him later as well, but he is our new assessment, social space assessment person, which we have been long in need of. Once upon a time, I helped with that role, so that was actually what I started doing in the department. And we have Sarah Kate Levann, who is our supervisor of professional...
Preparation and Learning.
Professional, Preparation and Learning. Sorry, they've got three very similar names in their units down there, and I switch them around, but.
And you all know Ben, but for others in the audience that I just appreciate the work he's been doing on this to cite. Any other guests, Michelle?
I just wanted to follow up on something Melanie said before, too, but just a quick Sometimes what is a popular sentiment might not necessarily be academically correct. And so I think, you know, even, I do think we, you know, it's good to educate folks about what we're doing, but I wonder if there are certain things, like I think of climate change, for instance, the issue, which I know is with the science standards. And so how do you protect, you know, academic, you know, the soundness of the information and still, and not yield political forces that are not consistent with science or history or whatever it is? And so I, so I understand what you're saying politically, it makes a lot of sense, but I wonder how you protect or how to ensure that just because something might be unpopular to the powers that be, it may or may not be in the best interest of academically, if you want to say.
Because, because...
Let the games begin.
Michelle is actually looking at me for this discussion.
No, no, because I think it's important that you brought up, no, I'm not looking at you because I know you would...
You're asking me what my sense is, yes.
But you brought up the issue around politics, so it's not a personal attack.
I didn't think it was. I didn't think it was, but I didn't want to throw this open to the other six members and say somebody else would answer this. So there's a difference between holding a public hearing in which those perceptions are discussed and education about those issues is given, and deciding that that's a better path. That's not ours to do, I don't think, the boards at all. And if you'll recall, with the Common Core, with, you know, with our college and career ready standards hearings, the path was, remained the same. We didn't alter any of our standards after those hearings were held in 2014 because they were correct.
Just to get funded.
No, that's not, okay. So it's important, really important, I think, here to not yield to emotions on this. It's an educational issue, and this is the group that can present the educational arguments for it. That doesn't mean that they may not temper what they're doing, not on climate change, but on other things. There's already been a sentiment that, you know, as you look at what we've got in technology, that that's good, so we may not need to do the technology piece of what's going on. We already have math standards. So that's, but every time that there's a good, solid discussion about education, that tends to help the politicians in the group. In this case, legislature's elected more frequently than we are, so they're more responsive to the constituents. They don't, if we can do our job educationally on this, which is information dissemination, allowing for discussion, allowing for feedback, transparency, this is why we think this is important for your child to learn this, then we're in a different position than if we just take it to the board table and say, we're not bothering to put together those videos so parents can be informed, we're not taking it out for public comment in a way that appeals to them or, you know, allows them to really participate. We're not going there. We're going on a different path. We haven't done this before, though. So I wouldn't presume that the results...
I wasn't questioning anything that the department was doing. That's not what I was questioning. I was just saying, how do you ensure? I mean, because, you know, sort of the backlash on Common Core was...
There was a tremendous amount of right and left backlash.
Right, it was nationally imposed, you know, it's more political than, which this is not. It's a different...
The legislature said to us, and I'm sorry, that's why I referenced the meeting, but the sentiment that was expressed in the meeting that I was discussing was that they are our partners, because while we make the educational choices, they provide the funding.
Right.
And because of that, they are vulnerable, because they have shorter terms than we do, to people feeling as if they're just simply rubber stamping an issue that never was discussed.
Right. It was, but it was discussed with those which...
I'm talking about this coming up.
And they did not come to Common Core.
I'm talking about what we're doing in the future, because we know what the outcome was of the hearings.
Right.
Okay? And what they're saying to us is, if educationally what you're doing is right, please make sure that the people of Michigan understand it before it's in a process that is not transparent to them, because then we can do our part, which is to fund things smartly and wisely.
John, and then Richard, and then Mike, or John, Richard, Kathleen, and then Mike.
We, in trying to ensure that what's developed, we're developing our quality and the best to help improve learning, you know, certainly can't allow a different motivated minority to derail that process. But I agree with Eileen, and the Common Core discussion was a good discussion. When you have that full public discussion of, these are the kind of educational learning standards that are quality, that are rigorous, that are focused, that public discussion about what these are really and how to understand them will ensure that the kind of good outcome that we have support for quality standards, because ultimately, political leaders do not want to be, appear to be, or really be, citing the stuff that is not sound academically to improve learning. And having full public discussion about the nature of these is the best way to ensure that. And I have no worries about a public discussion of the content of these standards. That is a very, that is an argument about what's equality informed by all the people from Michigan who've been developed, that it will be very clear.
Richard, and then Kathleen, and then Mike.
I...
Richard, then Kathleen, and then Mike.
Thank you. I think, I think Michelle's comments raise some profounder issues that sometimes get overlooked. One issue is that if the success of public education depends on public support, then it is imperative that the public understand and support the curriculum and the changes, et cetera, that are being made. I think another profound issue, which is often overlooked, many people, and I would count myself among them, regard the purpose of education as providing a common access to a common body of knowledge, you know, so that if you do the math and I do the math, we come up with the same answer. That way I can trust your math and you can trust mine, and, you know, we can reconcile with the bank and that sort of thing. Emphasis on new, doing it in new ways or new methods or things of that nature certainly give the impression that what's being taught today has little relevance with what was taught yesterday, that my education by implication, because I received it 40 years ago, is worthless versus, you know, what's currently being offered. So I think that there needs to be some attention to the continuity, in fact, more attention to the continuity in education, and not simply to the change, the innovation, and the other things that people get excited about. My perspective on Common Core is that, shoot, that's, you know, eighty-five, ninety percent of what we've always taught, but people talked about it as if it was something totally new, and then wondered why other people were, on the right and the left, were alienated from it. So I think there are some, I think there are some deeper issues that need, we need to be aware of. And specifically on this report, one is that arc of learning, which in our last discussion on this, it wasn't part of the, it wasn't technically part of the standards, but it's been assumed in the document and in your report here, we're going to push the arc of inquiry as an expectation of the teacher preparation institutions. So our standards have somehow become attached to a method of approach or method of teaching, which I would argue is less effective than direct instruction. But that's what fosters distrust, especially if parents in the home aren't familiar with the arc of inquiry or what's the point of this act? You know, I'm digging in the backyard, what's the point? So I think that there are a complex of issues. I wish I had a handy answer, but I don't.
You know, on that point, I think good advice in the sense that we struggled through, I would say, the Common Core in particular, with the idea that how teachers teach is not what we're talking about, so that we're clear about that. We maybe should be more, I think what I heard was this is what some of the discussion will be with the teacher prep institutions. Having said that, we want to be clear that standards are not the same as what teachers do in their classroom or how they've been trained. We'll work on that. That's interesting. Kathleen, then Mike. Feel like Bob Doll.
I think we have to do, this brings up the whole question of how we educate the public to the issues, on every issue that we deal with. So that I think, all the points that have been raised are very good. I think Richard's point about people's understanding of what we're doing is, we're still going to be teaching American history. The history isn't changing, but it's how we do it, make it, we try to make the teaching methods more effective. So we have to explain that to people. We have to explain that to the legislature. We have to explain it to parents. And we have not done the best job of that, and we keep talking about it, but I don't think we've actually done it that effectively over the years. But it applies to everything we do. We did the Common Core, that's four or five years ago already, and it became a political issue in the last year or so, with a lot of misinformation projected about it. And I got a call, a call the other day, and someone had been spending her time looking at YouTube, and I, I don't know how that people have time to do all this, but that day, looking at YouTube, and it's full of stuff about the Common Core that sounds to me as if it's misinformation. It doesn't sound like it's actual fact. And as you pointed out, Richard, Common Core is practically what we've been doing all along, was very similar to our grade level expectations. So there wasn't anything big controversial about it when we did it. It became controversial because people were given incorrect information. And we have to try to make sure that we're giving correct information and get ahead of the game and work with the newspapers and social media, obviously. People look at YouTube, and they get their information from that. Maybe it should go on YouTube. You know, the kinds of things that I might not think of, but other people use constantly. So it's a very important point that Eileen raised about the public education of this, because it is critical, and especially because we're trying to educate people to be good citizens.
Yeah.
So we want the citizenry that's out there now to understand what we're doing and why.
Yeah. I would say this to try to, I don't know in this day and age where everyone has a Twitter account and Facebook and podcasts and YouTube, because your point is exactly right. I mean, if you look at the YouTube things that a lot of the anti-C common core people cited, it didn't have anything to do with the standards. It might have had to do with what, from their perspective, quote, "a wacko teacher" was doing in the classroom, but it didn't have anything to do with the standards. So these, I would just say, kind of in defense of, I won't be here, but in defense of the team, Brian and others, although I'll probably be in August sitting there in shorts and sunglasses, using five minutes to support the standards. I'll at least be on record for supporting the standard. But I, it's almost an overwhelming task. We've learned from each of these. I mean, all the way back to my first year were the last time we redid social studies standards, and those board members who were here then remember, I got caught off guard and wasn't experienced enough to handle it very well, but I took a radio call when I was over at the library at something else, and suddenly they were saying, why are you taking America out of the schools? And what it turned out to be was, we had corrected the language in the standards where something was improperly called the American Constitution, when it's actually the United States Constitution, and before you know it, I'm on my heels on a radio. So what we've learned since then is, we don't immediately take radio calls, you know, that's one example. Common Core, we obviously learned a lot. I'm still not sure what we learned, I'll speak for myself, totally from the special ed rules, because everything was done there better than we have ever done it. If anyone took the time to look at what we did with the public, more than any time ever anywhere, and then to have CAC fully onboard, and then it just took one testimony, which I'm not going to go back at, I mean, it's done, but one testimony, and suddenly it was done. So, I mean, I only want to say on behalf of the team that it's a little bit like what I was just reporting, honestly, that when I'm told by a key, a couple of them, that we're there with you till we're not, you know? I mean, a little bit of it is just getting at what Eileen's saying, they're in two-year terms, they want to make sure that they're comfortable with their vote, so we need to keep working towards that, but it's not going to be perfect. There's just going to be some things that happen that we can't fully anticipate.
I know, we can't control everything, but we...
We can do better, and I think, I think the team is learning, and we are learning together each of those steps of the way. Eileen, never going to do legislators.
With social studies, people are going to come out of the woodwork with their special issues.
Yeah, there's almost more...
That happened when we adopted them in the first place, a long time ago. We were meeting in Bluefield Township, I remember.
Right.
We had people coming, and lots of people testified about various sections of the social study.
It's Eileen, and Michelle, and then we've got the legislators downstairs.
So I would just say it's a condition, a new condition of being in this position on the state board of education, and of course for staff, that there is so much information out on the internet that's allowing people to partially research issues and to come to conclusions without... to conclusions without having enough information to really weigh what's right and wrong. And I remember reminded of Henry Kissinger, who, two years ago, in Grand Rapids, when asked what the difference was between being Secretary of State then and now, said, "It's the plethora, it's the same problem that faces his great-grandchildren, it's the plethora of well-presented, totally inaccurate information on trusted websites, that only gives a partial picture, and which people then are upset, or confirmed, or excited, or reassured, but don't have all the information they need to really, to do well on decision-making."
Good quote. Michelle, and then we'll go to lunch.
I don't think there's any disagreement. I just wanted to, what's that?
Lunch is at noon, but you'll need time just to get downstairs.
Okay, we have a little bit of time, then, I misunderstood. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that what I said was framed properly, because I don't think we're disagreeing with each other. All I said, well, what I think should be respected is the expertise of the people who have put the standards together, and the people in the department. And as politics being politics, sometimes it can reshape curriculum, and I think there has to be a way to protect what we know is to be sound curriculum, and not, and do our best to make sure that the politics of it is, doesn't interfere with that. That's all I was trying to say.
That's a good point, I mean, and we'll all try to do that. It's virtually inevitable, though, so that's why I'm just saying, we need to cover every suggestion that you are making collectively adds to our opportunity to decrease the amount of politics in it. But in the final analysis, there will be some of that, and we just need to understand it, and we'll do our best to work through it. Because I think, Eileen stated it well, I mean, the Bolger, I'd forgotten about that piece of the Bolger meeting, but, you know, from their point of view, I remember being kind of unsympathetic at that time, thinking, "The board's the standards," very protective of, "The board's the standards, this is not your call." And I think got a little, grew up, we got a little of that in the meeting. But having said that, you listen and hear from them, it's not only that the citizens expect them to be part of this, but secondly, as you say, they fund it. So if we're past that, I think it is important to understand it, John's articulated that equally a number of times since Common Core. It's, I just want to assure you, it's so much better than the way we went through it the first time.
Yes.
But every time you have another hint on how we could get better at it, to Kathy's point, Eileen's point, John, that's good, we're good with it. But I wouldn't expect perfection, is all I'm trying to lay the groundwork for.
Sorry. If I can just echo what Mike said, and listen to this discussion, we appreciate it, because the department is very aware that our work needs to shift. In an information-rich environment, we need to be seen as a primary provider of good information, and we need to do it in many different ways. And so we reshaped our work, trying to be more customer-focused, having communication plans, being on social media, and spending more time in there. And we're, but these discussions always help us think about something we haven't thought about, because the work of the state agency is changing over time, and it's new. So we appreciate it, Mike's leadership, and sort of all of you on doing this work, so thank you.
What would you like to do, John?
We're due at noon downstairs, but we do want a lot of time to get down there, right? I can do my report in five minutes, which I'd like to do, just because I want to touch on Brian.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Sure.
I think we have to go to a regular meeting.
Let's do that, let's move into our regular, good afternoon, or good morning. The time is now 11:33, Anna Quarm, of the board, is present, the State Board of Education meeting of April 14, 215 is called to order, this is the regular meeting, John Austin, report please.
Okay, thanks. I, like Mike earlier, wanted to herald the hiring of Brian Weston, and thank you, Brian, for not only being a candidate, but accepting the job. And I think we're all going to find, and I'm finding already, as we're beginning to have some good discussions, and all of us will find Brian amazingly straightforward, and will be very helpful in helping us all organize around how we improve education, achievement, and learning, and that's the lead job. And so, thank you, Brian, for being here. We have signed a contract. For those who need the details, it's a public document, but I'll just summarize, because I know people want to know what it says, Brian's going to be paid $200,000 a year, which is, as we know, because we looked at the comparable salaries below almost every other state superintendent that we were looking at, but that's all the money we have. And it is well worth it, and appreciate Brian's willingness to do this, though it is a lot of money for the public's eyes. The other terms of the contract, all the benefits, all the things that Brian will get are comparable to other cabinet-level employees here in the state, as fits the job. We are going to begin, and we're already beginning, you know, Brian is beginning to spend some days with Mike and the team here, which will increase over the months ahead, to begin to understand, get to lay the land, begin to work on, with the department folks. We're arranging some times for us, as a board, to get together and begin to talk about our relationship, our communication, our decision-making, our expectations of Brian. And Brian is not someone who is afraid of being evaluated based on performance, and that's part of the discussion we'll be talking about, how we want to evaluate him, and what we expect of each other. So we're going to make time to do that. And individual board members, I know many of you are eager to get with Brian, and I just asked Marilyn, after talking to Brian, to please share a communication. Brian has an assistant who will, you can work with, to schedule a meeting at whatever early is convenient with Brian, to talk individually. Board members who want to do that, you can schedule that directly, and Brian's more than happy to do that. Brian is going to take a few days during July to just help Dearborn on the way, on their transition issues, so taking some of his vacation time to do that. Otherwise, we are very happy to have Brian take the reins, I'm going to talk substantively about the next steps in a minute. One next step we are going to do with the governor, Brian, myself, and the governor's chair, and the governor's staff, next week, just to talk about our relationships for superintendent, governor. And also, I'm sure we'll begin to talk about some of the substantive issues that we need to tackle in education together, and that's something I hope we will do episodically, and help Brian develop that relationship as well. And be clarifying, or at least being in sync on what our relationships are with the board, the governor, and the superintendent at those discussions. You know, one of the additional things that we will get started with, per what Brian discussed in his interview, is, as we begin to meet together, what are our sort of refreshed agenda for us, in terms of how we improve student achievement, what are our ideas, policies, approaches that Brian can help us develop to advance, as we look ahead, we'll use our meetings, we'll use our retreat, in part, to focus on what's our student school improvement agenda, what's our student achievement agenda, what are ways we can advance some of the ideas for strategically investing in school finance that we've discussed, and Brian can help us with all of that. I just want to note, you know, we certainly believe, and continue to believe, that we think the school turnaround efforts, to be most effective, should be part of our comprehensive attack on education, improvement on education should be nested here, certainly, where they can be part of the fabric of our full accountability assessment and support system for schools and school turnaround efforts. Certainly, unless and until the governor returns those functionalities to us, and hope that that will happen, we will, as a board, want to, with Brian's help, be very clear on what our policy guidance is on how to do effective school turnaround, and what kind of approaches we want to see encourage and make happen, and hopefully that will help shape wherever the SSRO is, in the interim, the policy approach that can be most effective, because that's the only thing we could all care about, is how do we effectively improve learning outcomes, particularly in the schools that we're not seeing it. And we're going to be, I'm asking all of you to, we're going to put our recommendations that Brian's held together very soon, on what those strategies need to be. So that's, I think, my report. Again, the contract that we have with Brian is otherwise similar to the one we've had with Mike, certainly those who want to look at more details. Brian appreciates that he's an at-wheel employee of this board, which is a welcome risk that someone in public service is willing to take, because he wants to improve student learning in Michigan, though we frame it as a three-year contract, always, to provide some structure to the document. So delighted we got it done, there were no issues that we had to face that were at all difficult in finishing the job, and thank you for the vote last month to select Brian after a difficult decision with so many good candidates, including the finalists, as we saw. But I think we have a wonderful new leader who can help us really organize around improving education, which is our collective job. So thank you again, Brian, for being here. I told him he could take this day off, I mean, you're a guy who's going to have to suffer through a lot of these meetings, but really appreciate his coming in to, begin to tune in, and he's going to be doing that, ramping up over the weeks and months ahead, so thank you.
As I mentioned to Brian, and wrote the board also, we, Brian's going to try to get his schedule to adapt to our all-staff meeting, because we only have a few of those a year, and you're certainly, some of you already said you can make it, we'd love to have you there. There's somewhat perfunctory meetings, but I think it'd be a good time to, for the staff to not have to wait too long to actually see Brian, and I, you know, symbolically at least, turn the torch over, hand the torch over to Brian at that time. So if you can make it, we'd love to have you. The date again?
April 30.
April 30th, so that memo went to you yesterday, as a board, and if Brian can make it work, it would be great. Looking forward to the transition, and so we're going to go downstairs to Level...
U.P. Upper Level, U.P.
And Room...
Three.
Room three, and we'll go from there.
And we'll weaken the...
1:30.
1:30.
At the latest, I mean, if they leave. If they just eat and run, then maybe earlier.